This conference will now be recorded.
In the last session, we were talking about accounts payable related to business requirement. We understood how business requirement is to be done or how you are going to understand the business requirement, how you are going to map it, how you are going to understand and document it if you are working in any project on accounts payable module. Now, we will try to understand assuming that you have collected all the business requirement. You understood the client accounts payable business process. Later on, what you are going to do, you are going to do the config. Now, in order to do the configuration, there are two prerequisite documentation that you will have to maintain. First one is your from the requirement, whatever you are going to do, from the workshops, whatever you are going to conduct, participate, you are going to write something called business process document. Or this is also called as as is document. In short, the current business process document. Based on that, you are going to put SAP proposed business process or in short proposed business process in SAP. This is nothing but to be process. This is nothing but a to be process. And based on this, once your client understands that we are okay with this, you are going to update something called business blueprint document. This is nothing but BBP document. Let me increase the font. This is nothing but business blueprint. Based on this, you are going to prepare another document called key data structures document. Now, this documentation list you will have to keep in your mind because these things will remain standard for any model, for any subtopic or for any functionality, for any process, this documentation will remain the same. It's not that everywhere it will be differing, the content will be differing, but the list of documentation that you are going to prepare as a consultant will remain the similar or will remain the same. And after this, you are going to maintain something called you are going to obtain BBP KDS approval or sign off. You will have to get sign off on the blue printed document or KDS document. And blueprint is also called as solution design document. People might be using different terminology, don't get confused when somebody is asking about STD or BBP, it is one and the same. And similarly, you will have to get, prepare one more thing called business process master list. This is nothing but BPML. When you are talking about BPML, you are talking about the business process master list, which is nothing but list of activities or list of the transactions that your client is going to perform from the accounts payable point of view. Now, this business process master list will help you working on test cases or scripts or scenarios. Similarly, based on this, you are going to prepare unit testing document, which is nothing but UT document. Similarly, user acceptance testing document. This is represented as your UOT document. And after this, you will have system integration testing document. Thus, we call it as SIT. And then there is something called regression testing document. This is basically RT document. And after this, you will have to work on user manual creation. This is basically SOPs or process manual. And then you will have to prepare configuration document. Similarly, user roles and authorizations metrics. And finally, you will be business sign off on the process for moving the TRS to production. In short, these fifteen steps must be there in your fingertips for any process. It is not only for accounts payable. This is applicable for everywhere. I mean, for everything, this is applicable in short, whether you talk about shield, whether you talk about AP, AR, cash, bank, any topic, any sub-model that you are talking about from SAP FICO perspective. From FICO perspective, any sub-model that you are talking about, these documentation will remain fixed. This documentation will remain fixed. It is just that currently we are talking about accounts payable point of view. Tomorrow, when you are talking about accounts receivable, same things will come into picture again. Anything related to taxation, cash, bank, whatever you are talking about from SAP FICO point of view, these things, this documentation will remain as usual because remember when you are working as a FICO consultant in the project tomorrow, you may not be working on everything. When we say you may not be working on anything or on everything, you may be limited or you may be having work allocated only with respect to accounts payable, only with respect to chill or only with respect to receivable, taxation, cash, banking, integrations, controlling anything. It may be bits and pieces of certain areas within FI or you may have to work on randomly on any area based on the requirement. Either based on the requirement or based on the role based, you may have to work on different areas accordingly. Make sure you are ready with it. When I say accordingly, make sure you are ready with it, at least you should know at high level what are the documentation that you are going to prepare, how you are going to work on these areas and what will be your approach? When you are aware of these kind of things, tomorrow when somebody is talking to you or when somebody is assigning some work, you know how you are going to work instead of straight away going and doing the configuration, you need to keep in your mind. All this documentation as a FICO consultant, you will be preparing in your project if you are working on accounts payable tomorrow. If you are working on accounts payable and when somebody is asking what was your role in the project? Don't blindly tell configuration, don't blindly tell you tested, you gave training. Apart from that, all these activities is what you have to tell. When you are talking about all these activities, the other person will make sure that yes, he or she has practically worked on the system or they know conceptually what a consultant does. Right? Once these things are done, I mean, I want you to go through these documentation. So slowly I will show the format. I will explain you how these are to be prepared in a project. Next thing, let us write down the test cases in accounts payable. When we are talking about test cases in accounts payable, we need to make sure once our configuration is completed, what are we going to test? It's easy for us to do the configuration, but after doing the configuration, how are you going to say that? Yes, my account payable is working fine. This is nothing but your business process execution or test cases execution or you are also calling it as UOT. Now, in this, you are going to take or you are going to collect all the scenarios which your client is going to perform. Accordingly, you need to test from your side as a unit testing. As a consultant, before you are reaching out to the customer or before you are reaching out to the user, make sure from your side you will do one round of a testing to make sure that yes, whatever was the business requirement, according to the business requirement, you did the configuration, your configuration is working again cross checking with the business requirement. Meaning, if this was the requirement, your configuration should meet that business requirement. Else, your configuration may not be approved by the user. First thing what you are going to do is you are going to create business partner. First thing we need to make sure you are able to create a business partner. Later on, make sure you are able to change business partner. I would say you are able to display business partner. I would say first point, I want to make sure I am able to create a business partner. Second thing, if there are any mistakes or if there are any additional things to be amended, I will be able to change the business partner master. And third one, whatever the business partner is already created, I would like to check or I would like to display the business partner. Once this is done, next thing I would like to say create business partner vendor. Similarly, same thing, display business partner vendor, change business partner vendor and then display business partner vendor. Whatever you are going to do for creation, make sure you are able to test it with the change. You are also able to test it with the display. Why we need to test with the create, why we need to test it with the change and display? Remember tomorrow, once your user is using or once your client started using this system, not everybody will have the full access in SAP. Not everybody will have full access in SAP. Here also, let me put create, then I will put I will make it this change. And finally, let me make it. Now, according to us, everything is same. According to everything is same, everywhere you are talking about BP vendor. Everywhere in short, we are talking about BP vendor, but when you are in a project, it is not just BP vendor. BP is a separate, vendor is separate. Because we have seen in the test posting of vendor creation in ECC, test posting of vendor creation in Spur Hana system. In ECC, you will be able to create vendor directly. In Spur Hana system, without BP vendor cannot be created. Whether you want to use the BP as a vendor or not, it's a different story, but create BP first. Without BP vendor is not possible. Now, why this is required? Because there is something called SOD. SOD is nothing but segregation of duties. There is something called SOD, segregation of duties. According to this, not all user or one user will not do everything. All users will not have all access. Meaning, it is limited. When I say it is limited, it is because there is something called SOD. And there is something called SOD conflict. You may be hearing these terms frequently. There is something called SOD conflict. When you are talking about SOD conflict, there is something called segregation of duties conflict. When you are talking about segregation of duties conflict, every organization will have segregation of duties. When you are talking about segregation of duties, we are representing as a user in the master data team. For example, I am working in the master data team. As a user in the master data team, I may be able to create only master. I may be able to create only master, but if there are any changes to be done, changes are to be made by another user. Meaning, if A is able to create the vendor, A is not able to change the vendor. For changes, you will have to reach out to somebody, let us say B. Now, there is another user called C. C cannot make any changes. C cannot make any changes. C can only display the vendor. C can only see whether BP is created or not, but C will not have any access to create it. C will not have any access to change it. He can only check or he can only display the vendor because his duty is not to create, his duty is not to change. Now, it is immaterial, no matter what, he is not supposed to have that authorization to create that authorization to change. Meaning, if C is logging into SAP with his user ID and password, if you click on create mode, it should not work. If you click on change mode, it should not work, but if you click on display, it should work. If C is trying to logging into SAP, create should not work, change should not work, only display should work. How do you make sure that these things are going to work? Based on something called user roles and authorization. Based on something called user roles and authorization, this is very, very important in every project. You are talking about you worked in a project wherein you were part of implementation whatsoever. You can tell you were working especially on roles and authorization. You can apparently tell you were involved or you were working more on the roles and authorization size side in your implementation project or in your rollout project. This is again a big activity which will take lot of time. You need to make sure how many roles are to be created in each role, how many T codes are to be included, whether it is supposed to be creation role, change role or display role, should we allow deletion, all these kind of things. You are going to understand you are going to include with the help of roles and authorization for which you have to understand how many users are there in each department. When we say we need to understand how many users are there in each department, for example, since we are talking about accounts payable, you need to understand the complete accounts payable process. When we say we need to understand the complete accounts payable process, look at from a client point of view, let us say they have got around forty users from the accounts payable or some hundred users depending on the size of the business, size of the organization, there may be ten user, five user, twenty, thirty, forty, it can be any number. There is no guarantee that it has to be only this many. They can have ten number of user. From there, you have to segregate the users or classify the user based on their duties, based on their day to day activities. For example, there are some setup users who are supposed to do post only data entry. I will say there are certain users who are supposed to do post only data entry on a daily basis. What I will do, I am going to create a role for invoice processing. From the invoice processing, what is required for a user who is posting the invoice? They only need how to post invoice and then whatever the invoice which is already posted, how to display the invoice? If there are any mistakes, I don't want the same user who is posting the invoice to make the correction. For corrections, I want some other user to make it so that I can have something called dual control. If I am making a mistake, I am only rectifying my mistake, I do not know what mistake I am making. Instead, if there is a mistake, I want that I should not be able to change my mistakes. If there are any mistakes, I want somebody else to change the mistake. I mean, change the document. How your client wants to do it? And how they want to segregate? When you are talking about this segregation, there are three activities here. I will put this here and now I will put user activities. When you are talking about user activities, first one is master data. Second one is transaction data. Third one is your reports. Basically, these are the user activities from SAP side. From the end user point of view, these are the user activities. Now, when you are talking about user activities, you are talking about master data. When you are talking about master data, it contains create change and a display. Similarly, here, report can only be displayed. Report can only be displayed. Meaning, you need to slowly start understanding what is the possible activity from each transaction. If you are talking about master data, master data can be created, master data can be changed, master data can be displayed. Similarly, if you are talking about a transaction, transaction can be created, transaction can be changed, transaction can be displayed. Report can only be displayed, nothing else you can do from the report. So this is something that you can control because this only display, no multiple options here in the report, it's only display. But when it, when you talk about master, when you talk about a transaction, we are talking about creating, changing, displaying. Not everybody will have everything. If I am a user, I may not be having a create a change a display. If I am a user, I may not be having create a change a display. I may be having limited authorization depending upon my role. I may be having limited authorization depending upon my role. Meaning, I need to understand or in short, as a consultant, we need to understand how the user roles are defined in the existing process. How the user roles are defined in the existing process, you have to set up a processor. When we are talking about we need to set up a process there, the way the users are segregated and how transaction codes are to be given to the user. I cannot say anybody can create the vendor, I will create vendor on my own, you will create vendor on your own. Somebody creates vendor on their own, there is no discipline. When we say there is no discipline, there is no discipline at the transaction, there is no discipline at the report. In short, it's all scrap. When we say it's all scrap, no client, no business accepts, agrees to it. What they want, they wanted to make sure their reports will come out clearly. When your reports are coming out clearly, when your transactions are processed properly, controls are built in, you need to make sure right from the beginning, everything is properly controlled. When you are talking about right from the beginning, first activities are master data. First activities are master data. Make sure in any organization, in any process, master data plays a very key role. In any organization, for any process, master data will play a key role. In short, if your master is created properly, transaction can be properly posted. If your transaction is properly posted, reports can be properly displayed. If your master is wrong, transaction will go wrong. If your transaction has gone wrong, reports will go wrong. If mistake is at the master, mistake is at the transaction, inconsistency at the report, meaning everything will go for a toss. No client wants this. Now, client does not know how your system is creating the impact, how your system is having dependencies, how your system is going to handle these kind of thing. Your client may be assuming that I am on SAP now, everything will be fine. Your client may be thinking that now we are on SAP system, everything will be fine, system is well controlled, everything is taken care by SAP. Your client perception, your client understanding may be wrong. Because you need to make them understand if data is properly created, if masters are properly created, if transactions are properly created, only then reports are properly generated. Else, you will get the same scrap data from the SAP also. The whole objective your client had migrated to SAP was because in the legacy system, you are not getting the proper reports. We do not have the proper controls. But when you are coming into SAP, if your client is making same complaints again, then there is no point that they were using legacy system. They are using now SAP system, they are making the same complaint. Now, you need to make sure there has to be a process defined for everything. When we say there has to be a process defined for everything, we need to make sure when you are talking about business process, you are talking about master data, how masters are to be created, who will create the master? What is the process? What is the current business process for creating a master? In our example, you are talking about a master related to vendor. In our example, we are talking about creation of a master related to vendor. Who will create the vendor master? On what basis you will create a vendor master? Is there any verification for vendor master? You need to understand, for example, if there is no process defined in any organization, for example, you take XYZ client or you take our company code only Acer. I would say I am the owner of the business, I am telling okay, we will create the vendor. Now, I should define a process, how I am going to create a vendor, how or at what stage, on what basis I am going to identify that I need to create a vendor. For example, different reasons that I need to buy a specific product or a specific service for which I do not have any existing supplier who can give me this. Now, I found a new vendor or I found a new supplier who is providing the same material or product or service at a decent prices and he is a trusted supplier. Now, I need to have some kind of clarity from the vendor. Just like that, in the market, you will find lot of suppliers who will give same product, same service. Your vendor is the person who is going to provide either a product or a service. Now, on what basis you are going to decide that I will buy from here, I will not buy from there. There should be some process defined. There should be certain rules and regulations, there should be certain criteria checklist. Only if the vendor supplier meets that criteria, they will be purchasing or they will be entering into a contract with that supplier. Else, they will not. Same is the case with us. You will, if you wanted to buy a product, same product you may get in a supermarket, same product you may get on the street, on food path, on different places. But you are not purchasing at a different places though you get for very less, less cost because you are not trusting. There is a point of trust when you are purchasing something. Same points, same logics are applied within the organization also by any organization, by any company. Slowly, we need to relate it. When you are starting to relate points, you will be able to understand, okay, this is how vendor is created. Now, your client is going to explain all these points when you are in any project during your workshop connection, during your initial requirement gathering stage, client will tell currently how they are creating the master. Assuming the same process, whatever they tell, you have to document the process. Once you are documenting the process, you need to make sure, once you are documenting the process, you need to make sure whatever the process that you documented is correct. Now, who is going to approve that? Yes, this is correct. Your client is again going to confirm it. Meaning, as a consultant, it is your responsibility, it is your duty to understand their current process. Before you go to SAP, before you do the configuration, make sure their current process you must understand. Without understanding the current process, you cannot do anything in SAP. Understand their current process, list out as it is. First, get the clarity on what they are currently doing. Once they confirm that yes, this is what we are doing, then you will sit and discuss with them. Okay, as per our previous discussion, this is how you are currently working on accounts payable or this is how your vendors are currently created. But when you come to SAP, this is how in SAP we will be creating vendor. First, you will have to create a business partner, then you will have to extend business partner as a vendor. This is the process. Now, tell me how you are going to create the vendors in SAP? Who will be creating the vendor? How many users you have? Do you have any separated team for master data? Or you want to assign this to a particular user from the organization? Now, accordingly, client will tell, okay, we will assign such dedicated users to users for creating the master. Fine, then you are going to create a separate role for master. You will be deciding to create a separate role for master. Accordingly, you are going to tell that your user is going, your client will tell, these are the two user, Mr. A, Mr. B will be creating a master. Fine, you understood that who is going to create a master. Now, do you have any process, do you want to have any control points while creating the master? Control point in this sense, while creating the vendor, while creating the business partner, you have seen there are lot of fields. Name, first name, last name, address, city, country, different names, different fields are available. Do you want to make sure certain information is mandatory for every vendor? Whether you want to make sure that certain information is mandatory for every vendor or certain information it is optional, certain information it is optional, even if it is not applicable, we are fine. But for every vendor, every organization would like to have certain basic information. What basic information they need from a vendor point of view while creating? You need to make a note of it and then you are going to understand that these are mandatory fields for every vendor. These are mandatory fields for every vendor. While defining your configuration, you are going to put certain control points. Control points are nothing but validations. Control points are nothing but validation. Based on this, at the time of creation itself, you can prevent certain errors. Meaning, while creating itself, I can prevent some errors. Meaning, while somebody is creating a vendor, if address is not mandatory. So I can create a vendor without giving any address. Now, who knows where this vendor is from? Tomorrow, if I wanted to contact this vendor for different reason, I don't find any address. Now, I come to know that there is a vendor created in the system, but there is no vendor. However, there is no vendor in the vendor, in the master. Then I will definitely put a question, how come system allowed to create the vendor without address, full address? Then there is a loophole, then there is a drawback in the system. System is allowing to create the vendor even if there is no address. No, 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 then your client will tell, no, without proper address, please don't allow anybody to create the vendor. Now, there is a control point. There is a control point to make sure address is completely filled up. So when you are talking about address, you are talking about address line one, address line two, cities, states. There is a control point to make sure address is completely filled up. So when you are talking about address, you are talking about address line one, address line two, cities, state, postal code. Whatsoever. Now these are all coming from the address point of view. Likewise, for every vendor, every business will have certain checklist. To create a vendor, this is the information required. Now, how they are going to create the vendor, how they are going to classify the vendor? These are all based on the configuration which we are going to do. Once we start defining all these kind of things, I am going to explain those point. Now, once you are able to create the vendor, make sure if vendor that you are going to create. Should this be ready for usage or you want somebody else to approve the vendor? There is something called dual control or there is something called maker checker concept. There is something called a dual control or there is something called maker checker concept, maker checker concept or dual control are one and the same, it is nothing but. If I am creating a vendor, straight away this vendor is not ready for usage, somebody else will have to confirm the vendor. Somebody else will have to confirm the vendor, only then you can record the entry in the vendor, else it is not. So you need to look at, you need to consider all these points, meaning we need to ask the user, you need to ask the client. Whether you want these functionalities and these are all available in SAP. SAP in the sense, standard SAP. Accordingly, they will tell, okay, we want this functionality, please enable it. No, 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 we don't want, we don't require this, we don't want to. You know, complicate the things for the user, we wanted to keep it simple. Our users are well disciplined, we will be giving it to the limited users. They will create it properly, no issues, no need to worry about it, we will manage it. Because every client is different, every client will have different need, different requirement. As a consultant, you need to make sure each and every client requirement you are able to understand. Accordingly, you will deliver the solutions. Don't think that in my previous project I worked like this, in the next project I will be doing, I will be doing exactly the same thing. You may end up doing exactly opposite in the other project. Though it is related to accounts payable, one project you may be working in a one, in different way. Another project you may be working in a different way because their requirement was different, another client requirement was different. Keeping this point in your mind, always remember, as a consultant, you should always make sure, understanding your business requirement. Understanding the client requirement plays a key role. If you are not able to understand the business requirement, if you are not able to understand the client requirement. You will not be able to do any configuration because config is straight away dependent on business requirement. If you are not able to understand the requirement, config will be tough. When I say config will be tough, you will be able to do the config, but you do not know why you did it. When you are not sure why you did it, why this is working like this, why it is not working, tomorrow you have to answer for all these questions to your client. When I say we need to answer, some, something they are trying to create it, system is accepting even if address is blank, then they will ask you. Dear FICO consultant, how come system is accepting to create a vendor without address? Then you should tell, you cannot say that, no, this, this, there is a problem in SAP, SAP works like this only, you cannot say, you have to tell during the requirement. It was told to us that address is not mandatory. Now, your client has to tell, yes, yes, I remember that, now I, I understand that without address, if vendor is created, it will be a problem in my reconciliation. No, 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 please make this address mandatory without address, don't allow anybody to create the vendor. Please give me a list of vendors where the masters are created without proper address, so that we will update the address. Now, these kind of things will come in between if they identify any problems. It's not about identifying a problem. When you identify the problem, because of this problem, if there is anything is already created, posted, you need to look at it. When you are able to look at, when you are able to check if anything is already created, posted, because of this problem, you need to also provide a solution. How do you fix that? Whatever is already created, whatever is already posted, it is not only about finding the problem, giving a solution. For the upcoming transactions, for the upcoming entries, what about the historical data? What about the historical data where vendor is already created without any address? How those are going to be sorted out? Now, all these points you will have to refer, all these points you will have to think while working as a consultant. Meaning, right from the beginning, slowly if you try to understand the different, different points. As we progress, you will become comfortable, you will become familiar. Because these things are the practical things that you will be working. While you are working in a project to tomorrow. And make sure on these areas, you will slowly develop the confidence. When you slowly develop the confidence on these areas, tomorrow you will be sounding very confident, tomorrow you will talk effectively to anybody. You will understand any requirement that is coming on your way in your project. This is with respect to master, like this, there are different points which we will practically discuss while we are on the master data creation screens. Now, when you are talking about a transaction, there are lot of transactions related to vendor. When we say there are lot of transactions related to vendor, we are talking about first one invoice posting. Because for the vendor, you are going to process invoice, how vendor invoices are created. For example, I may say. Post vendor invoice. Now, when you are talking about post vendor invoice, you have to specifically mention post F I vendor invoice. Now, when you are able to post the vendor invoice, you also wanted to display the invoice. To display the invoice, I may say. Display. F I vendor invoice. If there is any problem, I want user to change the invoice also. Then how I am going to allow user to change it? Then I am going to put another point called. Change F I vendor invoice. Now, the way you have the invoice, in the similar way, you will have something called credit memo. Now, we will have to put the same points again. Now, everything you will have to test with the user tomorrow. This is nine, I will put ten. F I vendor. Credit memo. I will put credit memo here, then I will put eleven. I will put credit memo here, I will put twelve. Now, everything you are talking about create change display, for every transaction you need to test. Whether you are able to create, yes, whether you are able to change, yes, whether you are able to display, yes. Only then you will tell that, okay, test case one passed, test case two passed, test case three passed. This is what you are going to work when you are doing or when you are talking about testing. You need testing, you have different kind of testing here. You are talking about unit testing, you are talking about U O T, integration testing, regression testing, different activities in short. Only these points that you are going to perform during your testing. This is about your invoice, credit memo. If there are any things, for example. Re-class. Vendor invoice. When I am talking about re-class vendor invoice, I may be representing now. I may be representing now, instead of posting invoice to X vendor, I posted in Y vendor. Now, how do I re-class it? Now, there should be a logic, there should be a solution. Now, how do you cancel the invoices? If you are able to post the invoice, you should also be able to cancel the invoices. Now, this is re-class F I vendor. If you notice, wherever I am talking about invoice, wherever I am talking about credit memo. I am using a term called F I. I am talking about F I invoice, I am talking about F I credit memo because there is another invoice. There is another credit memo called P O invoice, P O credit memo. Purchase order based invoice, purchase order credit memo is different. Without purchase order invoice, without purchase order credit memo are different, these two are different. Always remember, when you are talking about vendor. Invoices are two types, based on the purchase order and without the purchase order. If it is based on the purchase order, it is P O invoice. If it is not based on the purchase order, then you call it as F I invoice. Alright? Now, you are talking about re-class, I am just writing few, while we are on the actual data entries, I will add different other scenarios there. For example, I will put another thing called. Let's say. Now, vendor invoice with discounts. Okay, I may say. Vendor invoice with taxes. Okay, now vendor invoice with. Credit memo adjustments likewise. There may be different scenarios. Each client will have different kind of scenarios according to their business process. All these scenarios, whatever you are writing, are nothing but test cases. When you are talking about, I am, I was part of. U O T, I was part of unit testing or editing testing and all, they will be asking you, what did you test? When they are asking, what did you test, you are talking about these things. I tested if I am able to create a business partner, if yes, you are going to tell, okay, test result. Pass. Then what is the proof that you tested? When you create a business partner, you are going to get a BP number, put the BP number here. If it is not working, put result as fail. Fail means you are not able to create the vendor, some error is coming. You are all aware while creating a master, while creating the transaction, while generating report, you get different errors, quite common. If you are getting any error during your unit testing, you need to write down all the errors. And then identify why the error is coming, fix the error. Some errors may be because of your inconsistent master creation. Some errors may be because of your inconsistent configuration. Accordingly, make the necessary corrections in the system. Redo the testing, make sure test cases are passed. All the test cases must be passed, you should prepare a testing document. Along with the testing result, only with the help of this, only once you feel every test case is properly working, every case is passed. Then only you should sit along with the user for U O T. Then only you should sit along with the user for U O T. In the U O T, you are going to ask your user to do the same testing. Whatever you did, you want your user to do it. Now, when your user is doing, they are also going to create the same thing. They will also create a vendor, they will also post invoice and all. There they are going to check, there they are going to test in a different way. In your U O T, you are going to test in a different way. Usually, the way consultant checks, the way user checks are different. I mean, the way you are going to test the system, the way the user is going to test the system are different. And you should always understand, you will test from the client point of view, from the business point of view. Not from the technical point of view. When I say technical point of view, you can put any debit, any credit, you can just run the report, output is coming or not, I will say it is fine. That is the technical testing, that is high level testing, that is not required in the project. In the project, to make sure that you are. Gaining the successful consultant or you will get the positive feedback from your managers and all. You need to make sure you test system in a proper way. You should know how to test the system. It's not that you put any debit, you put any credit, you post the entry, down below document posted, report output is coming, master is created, data is displayed. That is not the actual testing, which as a FICO consultant, you are supposed to do. Instead, you are supposed to understand what is the business requirement, according to the business requirement, how exactly you are supposed to to test. When I say according to the requirement, how exactly you need to test, you should have a minimum understanding. Because these are all the business processes. These business processes are more or less same, similar in every organization, except minor differences. Except the minor differences, majority these are common everywhere. Majority these are common everywhere. In every project, you have to test in the same way, every client will use it same way because this is accounting at the end. When we say this is accounting at the end, everything is based on the accounting standard, debit credit accounting rule. And the same, the basic accounting logics whatever are there, they are supposed to be applied. You cannot say this is my choice, I cannot say this is my choice. Both of us will have to follow the same guidelines provided by your I F R S accounting principle or your Indian accounting principle, U S cap whatsoever. According to that, you should have the minimum knowledge of basic accounting. That is one of the reasons why everybody is looking for FICO consultants. Preferably from the accounting finance background, just a thought that yes, they are aware of these points. And these can be learnt, these are common for anybody, anybody can easily learn, that is another reason why SAP FICO is open for everybody now. There is no logic, there is no rule, only you should be from accounting finance background, you can be from any background, commerce, non-commerce. Just make sure you are in a position to understand basic accounting fundamentals and good with you. Because you are not the end user to know the accounting logics. You are a consultant, when the user is telling the accounting basics. Make sure you are able to catch what he is telling and then bring them in SAP. And for collecting the user requirement and matching it with SAP requirement, whatever the accounting that is required. If you are able to meet this accounting standard, if you are able to understand this accounting point, that is sufficient. And to this, you need to know different, different small, small points. They sound very small, but these things will appear. These things will work in the similar way in most of the areas in SAP. Especially in FICO. Whatever the points that you are looking at now, documentation, the way system will work, segregation of duties, user activities will remain same in everywhere. Whatever you are doing it now, they will remain exactly same for accounts receivable. Meaning, if you know these points, if you understand these points from the payable point of view. It is quite opposite from receivable. There is nothing much. One session you will understand what is A R. The way vendors are working, if you swap vendor, it will become customer exactly the same. Meaning you don't need to put additional effort to understand receivable, your payable will teach you accounts receivable by default. And you will never have a confusion between payable and receivable and you are not supposed to have at all. First point that when you are talking about subleture, when you are talking about subleture, between customer and vendor, most of the times we may get. Unnecessary confusion, which you should never get it. Between the sales and purchases, customer vendor transaction, don't get any confusion because same transaction is represented in both ways. Once you have to look at from the same transaction vendor point of view, same transaction you have to look at it from the customer point of view, then understand. If I am a customer, how I am going to treat this transaction? For the same transaction, if I am a vendor, how I am going to treat this transaction? Then there is no point of confusion, else it will lead to unnecessary confusion which will not allow you to have the confidence. When we say which will not allow you to have confidence, with this lack of confidence, you may struggle in the project. Especially when your user is talking about sales, purchase and then reconciliation and all, you may find sudden things sounding tricky, sudden things. Going out of your head, though they are very simple because you are stuck with certain basic logical confusion. These logical confusions we have to avoid right from the beginning. Alright? So these points like this you have to put test cases and like this there will be huge number of test cases. There will be a big number of test cases in every project for every module. For every model, I mean to say, G L, A P, A R, cash, bank, tax. Assets everywhere, you need to execute every test case, for everything you should prepare a manual. For everything, at the end you will have to prepare a user manual. How do you create a business partner? You should create a manual. Tomorrow, in your client side, they will hire somebody who is not, not from SAP background. They hire somebody, a user to create a vendor master, but this person did not work on SAP before. Now, you cannot make them and, and then teach them how to create a vendor, right? And they are all experienced candidates, what you want them to do, you want them to refer a document and then create on their own. For that, you need to create a user manual. For that, you need to create a user manual or S O P, standard operating procedure or business process manual. As a consultant, it is one of your responsibility. Creation of user manual is one of your responsibility in which you need to include different points, nodes, bullet points. Instructions before creating the vendor mod, vendor master, what fields are to be filled up, everything you need to fill, fill up and then make a document. Convert this into a PDF, share it with the client. Now, who is going to do all this kind of a thing? FICO consultant, meaning you are going to do all this kind of a thing. If you talk about the configuration very straightforward. Fifteen minutes your A P config is completed. To do all these things, you will need lot of time. You may need couple of days, maybe a week time to complete all these things. Testing, documentation, everything you have to do it. That is why remember, all the projects will take months, years. When we talk about any project, why we tell that every project is going for minimum six months, nine months, one year, one and a half year, two year because. Config is very simple, but testing, making sure that this config is not creating impact any other places. It's not that only you are configuring the system, other modules are also configured in the system, your settings are not affecting the other model. Other model is not affecting your model. End of the day, you need to make sure everything is thoroughly tested collectively. To do all these kind of things, to coordinate everything, it takes time. And you need to understand from a. Overall business process point of view, not only from the FICO point of view, within FICO, again only vendor, again within vendor only master, don't look at it. Don't look at it at bits and pieces, that way you will never look at it in any project. Tomorrow when you know this way, you are not going to look at the system at all, don't look at it now also. Right from the beginning. Let the confusions will come at this stage only so that it will be easy for you to overcome the confusions. It will be easy for you to come out of all these issues, tricky situations and all, you will have a clarity slowly. So that, okay, tomorrow, there is no point of confusion for you. Any requirement, anything when somebody is explaining to you in the project. Or you are part of any meeting discussion with the user, you can be actively involved, you will be able to understand what is their expectation. Why they are talking all these kind of things, what you need to do, how you need to perform, you will have a clear clarity, else these confusions, these question marks will be raised. Or will be coming, coming to you when you are in the interview or when you are in a project, at that stage, again coming back, learning again, opening back is practically not possible. And you not have that much time there. Whatever the time that you are investing, make sure you sit now only, understand the logics, basics properly. Same logic, same logics, same basics, same concept is applicable almost everywhere in FICO. If you understand these points here, similar points we are going to apply everywhere almost. Almost everywhere, similar logics are applied. Everywhere you have to think in the same way. As a consultant, you have to understand how you have to look at a business process. How you need to look at it from the business point of view and also from the consulting point of view. Then only you will understand the gap. From the business point of view, you want everything, but from the consulting point of view, certain things are not possible. As a client, I ask everything, I want this, I want this by clicking on this, I want everything to come. But system is not bringing us on its own, right? System requires some instructions, system requires a certain configuration. Certain things can be configured, certain things cannot be configured. What can be achieved through configuration? What cannot be achieved through configuration, where there is a possibility with the technical help, in short, the ABAP or RISF object. Where there is no possibility with RISF object also. Certain things, doing is possible but complex. And how you are going to identify all this kind of thing? You cannot say, client is asking me to do it, I will do it. Not allowed. Because not everything is part of your budget. When I say again budget, you need to understand for every project there is a budget. When we talk about for every project there is a budget. In every project, there is a scope. In every project, there is a scope, meaning there will be a list of agreed items, there will be list of agreed activities, which will be delivered, which will not be delivered. Whatever is agreed, only those things we have to configure, not everything. Now here, most of the times people find it difficult. Because they do not know what is the project's scope. When we say what is the project's scope? When you are practicing accounts payable or when you are learning accounts payable, what we will do from the accounts payable, you will practice everything. Or you know different points from the accounts payable, when you are assigning to a project in, in future and you have to do configuration. You may not, you may be doing all the configurations whatever you know from accounts payable, that will put you in trouble. Because you need to strictly go by the documentation, strictly go by the requirement, whatever was provided by the user. You knows other configuration but it is not required for the client, you should not do it. If you take something, it will work in a different way, if it is not discussed with the client or if it is not documented anywhere, don't take it. Meaning it is not your practice server to experiment, it is not your test server, training server to do. This will do, it will be very good, that I will do, it is not good. Don't take any decisions on your own. Everything is already decided, discussed, agreed. Signed by the user. Your blueprint is signed by the user. Tomorrow, if things are not working as expected, they will simply refer the blueprint document. See, this is not agreed, this is not discussed. You have not agreed to do this, we will not do it. If you want this functionality to work, please confirm that you need this functionality, accordingly we will activate, we will do the configuration for that functionality. Just like that, they will tell, do this also, you don't do it. Meaning you should know at, at what level you do the additional configuration, what instructions you require, what email confirmations you will require. What documentation you will require, what is the impact analysis that you are going to do before you do additional configuration? Everything you should know, just like that, don't do any config when you are in a project. These points, if you are not aware, we will end up, somebody, some user is asking you to do something, you will do it. Some user is asking you to create this, you will create it. Some user is asking you to delete it, you delete it. Because according to you, user told me, meaning this is the requirement, I got it, I did it. You should again think whether it is supposed to be done or not done. There is something called approval metrics. There is something called approval metrics. Now who has to approve the business requirement? If anything to be changed in the system or if anything to be created in the system. That is something called change management or change request. Who has to give the request, change request, who has to approve it? Okay, and then if somebody is approving, you can directly do it or you need to take internal approval from your project manager, project lead. If you are not aware of these things, straight away somebody is telling you are doing it, then again you are at risk. Meaning knowing the configuration, without knowing how exactly this is done in a project, how exactly you are going to manage in a project, will put you in it at a risky situation. Will put you at a risky situation wherein nobody can save you there because sudden situations will come in such a way that nobody can justify that. So sudden fundamental mistakes you should never do in a project. If sudden mistakes are made, no other go, you have to go out. And make sure, we will not get into that situation that is completely ruled out. It is a zero percent possibility for you. You have to make sure that situations, those cases are zero percent for you. You don't even take one percent risk over it. Meaning you should know how you have to work and once you understand these points, these logics, these are applied as it is in most of the areas in your FICO. It's a one-time effort that you are going to put, that you are going to understand, apply. Most of the areas, this is how you are supposed to think, this is how you are supposed to work. So that when you are in a project tomorrow or in your, in your next assignment, you will be able to talk in a confident way, you will be able to understand what others are talking. Okay, so what I will do, let me stop this here. So we will start the configuration related to our accounts payable in the tomorrow session. Alright, good night.